That has been made with the second, all in favor.
Aye.
Oppose, all right, we have an agenda and we won't, we won't wait any time longer. Uh, it's a discussion on uh ordinance regarding approaching stationary vehicles by Mr. Peterson. Are you out there, sir?
I'm here, your honor.
All right, your show.
I was asked by the police department to draft an ordinance that is identical to Iowa code section three twenty one point three two three capital A. Uh, Iowa has a law that says a vehicle approaching an authorized emergency vehicle, a stationary towing or recovery vehicle, a stationary utility maintenance vehicle, or a stationary municipal maintenance vehicle, a highway maintenance vehicle, a construction vehicle, or a solid waste or recycling vehicle that's stationary. And that if those um vehicles are displaying flashing lights as well as even a stationary motor vehicle that's got its hazard lights on, the operator of that vehicle has to change lanes if possible. Um, and if they can't do that, they have to uh reduce the speed to a reasonable and proper speed for the existing road conditions, which speed shall be less than the posted speed limit and be prepared to stop. Um, so it's just simply verbatim what the Iowa code is and we PD would like to make it a, a uh city violation as well. So that's what we drafted.
All right, um, uh, any questions?
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor, uh, who was that? I heard a lady and a male.
This is Dylan can go first.
All right, Ms. Dylan.
My question was just, are we having problems with this? And secondly, what would the penalty be?
Um, yeah, the, the officer, I think that requested said he could, he could write that ticket all day long. Uh, and I guess I think it's mainly in the context of uh, like if you're on two eighteen um, or sixty-three maybe, that when there's two lanes available and I think people are um just going by the, the vehicle. Um, that's the only reference or context I have for it, and I believe it's a scheduled violation carries a hundred dollars.
Thank you.
Mr. Bowden.
Thank you, sir. So it just basically mirrors the move over and slow down um, a, a law that, that, that's out there. When, when will you be bringing this back before the council, Mr. Peterson?
I don't know, next week, I don't know.
Well, the, yeah, December seventh is our next meeting, but so you're planning on bringing it right away, aren't you?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Said, I don't know.
Oh, no.
Sometime at some point, um, sorry, Mr. Sorry, Mr. Peters. Uh, anyone else, any questions?
Sounds good.
All right, uh, good job, Mr. Peterson, thank you for bringing that on forth on behalf of the uh, uh, police department. It's all about safety, so right now we will switch over to the update from Grove Cedar Valley. And I believe Noel or Carrie or who wants to uh start this?
Hello, hey, um, thank you, um, our team isn't all on yet, they know it's at four thirty and I just texted and said, hey, we're moving through this language pretty quickly. So I'll pay it on as soon as you can, uh, but Will is here, I see. So I, you do have in your council packet, I'll go ahead and get it started, I was actually gonna wrap up, um, but we'll go ahead and get started. Um, you did receive in your packet, um, the update of the activities that we're doing. You can see we've been, um, it's not that we're not busy all the time, but we've been exceptionally busy, um, especially helping our businesses uh keep their heads above water and make connections that need to be made uh to this pandemic, um, and getting information out there. And thank you to those that have been tuning into our town hall meetings, we found those to be very valuable. And um, we know that we're being able to get information out in front of people as quickly as possible um with that mechanism of using our virtual communication. Um, but while we've always been on the economic development side, we've always been about business recruitment, uh, business marketing, the Cedar Valley. We're far more about in existing business right now and making sure that our current businesses are getting through this. Uh, we want them to grow and remain and thrive, and so um our focus has been recently um existing business through and through. So um, with most importantly, we want to thank the, the city of Waterloo, your partnership and your collaboration has been valuable and important and necessary and very vital in our ability to really do what we need to do um throughout the Cedar Valley, but especially in the Waterloo um area with your, with your help and support. So I see our board chair has hopped on, Chris Faraday, and he actually was gonna do this welcome, but um I said, Chris, as soon as everyone hopped on, I would turn it over. But I pretty much said what I was gonna say anyway, and mostly thank you, but looking through the packet, you'll see um what we've been doing. Um, and it's been um very effective, and again, we couldn't do it without your help and support. So Chris, I'll turn it over to you.
Great, thanks, Carrie, and thanks for allowing us to come in front of the council today and, and truly exactly what Carrie said, which is this is a partnership. Any great community doesn't exist without a strong and vibrant business community. And certainly twenty twenty has given us uh one for the record books in terms of uh as the business community learning to be flexible and learning to partner with other organizations to make sure that we are coming out the other side stronger as a community. And so I want to thank you um as members of the city council for being our partner as we look for economic development opportunities. But more importantly, over the last year, for your flexibility as we work together for the business community that is here uh and that is doing everything that they can to make sure that they're staying healthy and vibrant in the, in the coming years. So thank you for your continued support and investment uh with us across the board. And with that, I would turn it over to Carrie, but I believe Will may be going next.
Yep, uh, go ahead, Will, our director of talent development, Will, as you know, has been doing, uh, while we always knew that talent was the primary um issue for all of our employers, even with COVID, talent still is an issue, only we're going about it in different ways. We're addressing what they, what our employers need, what our employees need to reconnect them into the workforce. So Will, I'll let you go ahead and give your update if you would.
Yeah, no problem, thank you so much, and I, again, I want to echo what, what everyone's saying, thank you to the council for allowing us to give this update. Um, it's, it's, I think it's really beneficial not just to you, but to the city at large. Um, with, with everything going, including, you know, with COVID and, and, and so on, uh, this has been a um, I don't want to reuse this word, everyone's using unprecedented um time, and so uh the, the approach to attracting talent has um taken a creative approach. And so uh we have been, we've been having to do things a little bit differently, a lot more digital, um, virtual, virtual things of what everyone is doing, but it's requiring us to retool things quickly. Uh, one of the big things that are, we're doing as a um, uh, as a recruitment piece of our live the valley branding of it all. Uh, it's reaching out to audience, not just in the Cedar Valley, but uh with on this digital platform of throughout the, the country and, and beyond. Uh, to date, just kind of looking at our, some numbers, uh, we have reached over two point five million people uh with that branding. Uh, receive over a hundred and thirty thousand um views to our websites, et cetera. And, and out of that, uh, we have had over a thousand um new talent leads, so that's critical um during these times. And I want to quickly just kind of touch base on a couple of things that we're, that we're working on as well. Uh, we've been partnering uh with other organizations as well, and one of these big partnerships that came out of this is the NITE program that we're doing. Um, it's a quality pre-assembly, uh, pre-apprentice um program that is a collaboration between manufacturers as well as the um, the Waterloo schools, et cetera. And so it's going to uh, it's going to have a cohort of students going through it, uh, starting in January. So we're excited about that to get um these students through this program and kind of start building that talent base from within. Um, our uh, it was still November, so last month we had our economic inclusion conference, and so that, we had to retool that and we went virtual for that. Many of you uh participated with that and it's kind of, I'm excited to say that we had our largest event uh to date, even with the disruption of COVID. COVID, we had over three hundred and eighty registrants, um, that registered for that conference, and we have had thousands of views beyond um that, the conference because it's made uh available to people um afterwards. And so we're excited about net share and how we can really grow off of that. And really, we are that premier uh conference in diversity, equity, and inclusion for not just the Cedar Valley, but Iowa and the Midwest. And so we're super excited about that, and we can't do without, without your support. Um, as well as uh, our economic inclusion network is a big thing that's happened over the, the last year. And it's really this great opportunity for uh organizations, we convene organizations together, allows people to cross-pollinate ideas, experiences, including uh what's working, what's not working, allow people to ask questions, uh, to kind of help each organization grow. So that's been a huge um win, I think, for, for the Cedar Valley. And uh, and then our partnership with twenty-four seven Black, um, that's the Black Leadership Advancement Consortium, it's a new organization um to the area. But that partnership uh has allowed us to, to really help with this uh, with this minority business and entrepreneur accelerator program and venture school. So the uh, we have, in this first cohort, we had fourteen minority-owned businesses going through it. And so it's really exciting uh because it's, it's not just intentionally reaching these minority businesses and helping them grow in the Cedar Valley, but it's providing uh resources uh to these minority-owned businesses to help them grow and thrive and really become uh um huge assets into the, the community. And so we're really excited to partner um with that as well. And so uh, that's just kind of from the high level over the last quarter. Uh, uh, just kind of some of the cool and uh exciting things going on with Grove Cedar Valley in regards to talent. Um, from now, I, I could pass it back to Carrie unless anyone has any questions, I'm open.
You probably have time for questions toward the end, um, we have our Vice President of Economic Development, Lisa Skubel is joining us too. And again, you, you have a lot of our um data and our facts in the packet uh that were sent to you ahead of time, but just an overview we'd like to have, um, share with you too, if Lisa would do that, thanks.
Yes, uh, sorry, I was a few minutes late, my clock is a little bit off, so thousand apologies for that. Good afternoon, uh, we appreciate, as we always do every time we can connect, is we appreciate your collaboration with Grove Cedar Valley, especially right now as we're all trying to stay nimble with our work while we stay true to our mission at the organization and at the city. Since our last update in May, we saw an increase of seven new project leads. These leads were predominantly food-related, requiring available property ranging anywhere from the low side of fifty acres to upwards of around two hundred acres, which is much larger than what we had seen before that pandemic, and I'm sure Noel will agree. These seven leads do not include another five leads that required existing space only, they wouldn't look at our land, Greenfield land. And because they had to get into space as soon as possible and they couldn't wait for new construction. We saw that also take a leap as well, companies uh that have reached out or their representatives have been looking at existing space right now, hundred and fifty thousand square feet to as much as three hundred thousand square feet uh with availability as soon as possible or sometime the first quarter of twenty twenty-one. As I mentioned before, unfortunately, we aren't, we weren't able to participate because we had the lack of uh available space or our numbers would be higher for lead generation. Since May, we also had two external prospect visits, both which are still active and we're still pursuing and responding as they request additional information. I believe both of them, we should know where we stand hopefully before the new year. We successfully visited with about eighteen Waterloo businesses from mid-July through the end of August during the annual statewide existing business interview initiative called Best of Iowa. A business report for Waterloo, the Cedar Valley, and the state of Iowa will be published early next year in twenty twenty-one. This will guide not only the state, but us on initiatives important to existing businesses right now after the new year, and we will share those reports with you when they are published. We are currently doing domestic lead generation uh right now, it looks a little bit different, as I may have mentioned, uh, virtual, a lot of Zoom meetings or Microsoft Teams. But uh, we, we started this domestic lead generation uh campaign about three weeks ago, and we pinpointed and narrowed down identifying five hundred and thirty companies in the U.S. that have the ability or would appear to have ability to uh expand and in growing uh market segments despite the pandemic right now. So right now, we have a team reaching out uh to identify from this list whether these companies, one, have expansion plans, but two, whether they would consider Iowa, northeast Iowa, and engage into, engage in a conversation with us. So that initiative will run through March, uh, we anticipate our goal is to have at least six, ideally eight virtual meetings between now and then. Uh, when possible, we will, because this is a virtual, we will be able to include, excuse me, city staff on these virtual calls, so we will do so. And uh, we are now weeks away from executing a new lead generation initiative, which we've never done before, but we are thinking outside the box right now, I hate to use that term, but we are, that utilizes the live robot on our economic development portion of GCV's website. On the weekdays, a live person will be able to answer questions of consultants or companies that are looking uh for information, maybe not easily finding it, uh, or it's beyond the scope of what we have on our website. So the live, uh, this will run in parallel uh with a narrowly defined digital marketing campaign on LinkedIn. This marketing initiative will last three months when it starts, it'll probably start early next month, and we will evaluate thereafter if we want to continue or make adjustments moving forward. We'll also be participating on virtual meetings with companies in France and Switzerland interested in establishing new locations uh in the United States. Though we're experiencing limitations with international travel, it does not exclude our ability to start the conversation with the companies right now when they're able, and then hopefully continue them when they come uh to the U.S. uh sometime next year. Our goal is to pitch two to three international companies each day over a four-day period, starting next Monday. If you ask why we uh pick these two countries, uh, France is not only European's largest accounting entity, but also there's six largest source of foreign direct investment, or as we like to call it, FDI, uh, in the United States, followed closely by Switzerland, which is the seventh largest source of foreign direct investment in the U.S. and a leading influencer in the uh global economy for advanced manufacturing. So uh, as you, as Carrie alluded to, you have the report in front of you, this gives you a summary of what we've been seeing in the market since uh May, but also what we're planning to do the second half of our fiscal year. Uh, Carrie, I'll turn it back to you, thank you.
You bet, thanks, Lisa, and Lisa alluded to some of the things going on as what did well um on uh our apprenticeship program and the kinds of things that are happening with upscaling and upscaling our workforce. And Wes is here, Wes James is here as president of TechWorks, a lot of that is going on on the TechWorks campus. So Wes, I'll let you go ahead and take it over to people, please.
All right, I had to promise Carrie to keep this under the twenty-minute version, so I've got four main topics, I'll go quick. Uh, first, we've got a new member of our TechWorks tribe, we'd like to welcome the Volunteer Center of Cedar Valley. Uh, Lauren Fink and her group have joined us and are officeing with us. If you'll head up the elevator, turn left, and on your path to the Grove Cedar Valley offices directly to your left, you'll find Volunteer Center of Cedar Valley. So next time you're in, next time you're able to visit us, uh, invite you to welcome them to TechWorks, check out their new digs, always happy to have more people. Second, we've got a lot of progress at the Lincoln Savings Bank build-out with Peters Construction. The building progress is impressive, especially given all the headaches and challenges that come with the COVID. But uh, they've got the new roof nearly completed, they're putting glass in on the clear story, the monitor bump up in the center of the roof. As you drive by on the highway, you can see that, see that progress. So we're very excited to be almost dried in, and once that happens this winter, they'll be doing interior finishes on fifth and sixth floor. If you look at the TechWorks Facebook page or Envision's Facebook or website, you can see some architectural fly-throughs, and actually Envision has several pictures, and on our Facebook, TechWorks Facebook page, we've got a link to that. Actual photos of the work inside, they've cut a large-sized hole between fifth floor and sixth floor. So we've got about fourteen sto-, fourteen-foot stories each, plus the clear story in the middle. So we're gonna have a, a high, tall, three-story atrium down the middle of the LSB corporate offices inside that building with a grand stair, grand wooden staircase to the north end. So a lot of interior work is happening, um, construction progress. Third University of Northern Iowa continues to grow, they're operating on a daily basis, monitoring COVID safety protocols with the students and the staff. But their technology progress is again impressive, they have a brand-new Kia fully automated investment casting cell, so think a lights-out robot, industrial full-scale robot in a cage. The students will learn not only about the foundry process and the metal casting techniques and the science with that, but also the coding and control and troubleshooting of a full-scale industrial robot with that. So that product, that new equipment, ready for startup in the next thirty days or so, uh, possibly even sooner. And last, uh, we are continuing to create a pipeline of skilled workforce and push new technology. For instance, University of Northern Iowa's progress, push that new technology out into area manufacturing industries. But at the same time, companies can't adopt new technology if they don't have the workforce, we're working on both sides of that model. And with that, I'm working with Will Frost and uh some significant partnership at John Deere and Hawkeye Community College and the Waterloo School System. We are working to put together an apprenticeship program uh in training for advanced manufacturing beginners at TechWorks starting in January. So lots, lots on our plate and uh good opportunities to work with Will and Carrie and some of the others at TechWorks. And let me echo my colleagues in thanking the council and the mayor for your support. Uh, we appreciate working with you guys and appreciate the productive relationship we have with the city, so thank you.
Great, thank you, Wes, and also on, on our team uh with us here tonight is Jim Schaefer, he's I don't know, Jim, if you want to um hop on here, but um he, Jim is one, along with Lisa, that keeps their um ear to the ground to listen to what's going on with our businesses, what's needed, uh, what's coming up, what we need to be prepared for. So um, we, we definitely have all those bases covered, so um, I don't, Jim, do you want to add anything else?
Um, nothing, just again, thanks for your support, uh, Carrie and I continue to have conversations with the business community, uh, first checking in on seeing how they're doing uh through all this and ask for their continued support uh for twenty twenty-one. Um, uh, we've been very pleased and, and honored that, that they're giving, continues to give us that support. They understand what we're doing, uh, because some of our smaller businesses are feeling the pinch a little bit more. And we've continued to work with those businesses that didn't have the ability to, to pay their dues, membership dues right now. We're, we're willing, we want to work with them and, and get through this together. So without the support of those larger businesses, uh, those more successful ones, um, you know, we wouldn't be able to continue to do what we're doing as we work through this together. So we're taking it one day at a time, uh, we're confident we're gonna come through this, and uh, people, people appreciate the messaging that we're getting out in this new virtual world.
Right, very good, thanks, Jim. We will open it up to questions, but um first I really do, again, echoing everyone, thank you for our partnership uh and walking shoulder to shoulder with us, you know, to support our businesses, um, while being a champion for growing our businesses, our families, and our lives in the Cedar Valley. So um, what else can we provide for you, what other questions might you have that we can answer for you tonight?
Um, Carrie, just in, in thirty seconds or less, if, if I missed it, can you tell about how you're working with public health? Uh, the amount of folk, businesses you had on the call, how we're trying to keep businesses moving?
Absolutely, sure, absolutely, thank you. Um, so we have, Nafisa Bonney is on our board of directors, that's the first time the Director of Black Oak County Health Department's been on our board. But she and I, I have been in touch with each other quite a bit over the last, um, even before the pandemic, to be honest. And um, her comment to me was, we need to have the business community fully aware and understanding what public health is all about, and how can we help each other, and we totally agree with that. So Nafisa's on our board, but even aside from uh that realization, um, we have recognized how important, and so has Nafisa, about um making sure the business community is aware of what's happening with a lot of tightly used restrictions because the Black Oak County Board of Health, as long, as well as Grove Cedar Valley and all of you, want our businesses to remain open. But we want them to be open and keep their employees and their patrons safe, so how do we do that altogether? So last week, uh, we did have a town hall meeting uh that included the Director of uh Health Department, Nafisa Bonney, and our two CEOs of our two major healthcare systems, um, Pam Delicordell and Jack Duzenberry. Um, just to answer questions, I don't think there was anything really new to that conversation, except it brought it home to how all of the, this data, how all of this information that's being swirling around out there, how does that affect us here in the Cedar Valley? So it was very um helpful, we had, uh, we would have had over a hundred people, but we had to cap it at a hundred. So we knew we were um reaching people that really wanted to learn more, um, and we'll continue to do that. So while everybody knows that having to have conversations like this virtually isn't what we would prefer to do. conversations like this virtually isn't what we would prefer to do, we found that, um, it's been very advantageous to get information in front of people that need it as soon as possible. So, um, we kind of, we were thrown into the deep end like everyone else, but we've been swimming pretty, pretty good and keeping our head above water and making sure that we're meeting the goals that our businesses need us to do. So.
Thank you. Ms. Jewin?
Just saying to ask if, two questions or comments. During this whole virus, have there been, or even outside of that, as you're approaching potential businesses to move to the area, there are one or two things that they consistently say Waterloo doesn't have that, or Waterloo needs this, or, and Lisa, you mentioned maybe we don't have enough available buildings, but are there other things? And then secondly, I just want to thank Carrie and her team. You have given the city a lot of support on whether it was them, the box, or other initiatives. And we really appreciate how you helped us reach out to the business community and get information out to them.
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, that's, we're all doing this together. I'll let Lisa answer that question because she, she's their first point of contact when they're considering the Cedar Valley. Um, so Lisa?
Yeah, that's a good question, Sharon. Thank you for asking it. Actually, there isn't. Uh, with the, uh, square footage range I mentioned, uh, the availability of that kind of space is difficult to find in Iowa, let alone the Midwest. I, I was talking to a real estate, uh, uh, person, uh, commercial real estate person out of Peoria, Illinois. And before the pandemic, he was seeing vacancy rates for industrial space in the double digits. And right now, since the pandemic, uh, it's, uh, it's under 5%. So it's just the speed of, uh, these companies need, knowing that they needed to expand. And now that acceleration has happened and, uh, the real estate is starting to get, the existing building, real estate is starting to get pretty thin. I'll tell you what, if we did not have a certified industrial site or these like large, larger sites in, multiple larger sites in Waterloo, uh, we probably, uh, we probably would then be lacking. But, uh, you're doing a good job. Keep doing it. And, uh, I think you got an incredible team with Noel, Adrian and Tim on the front line and with all the support of, uh, Water, Waterloo Public Works or Waste Water and Water Works, as well as the rest of the planning department. Uh, they're doing the right thing and they do a good job, honestly.
Well, and, and I think, um, what we're hearing from businesses is that they do appreciate that the Waterloo Council is sensitive to what they're going to need, um, to grow, whether it's broadband or whether it's these industrial spaces or certified sites, which is what we do have. Um, I think that's been, uh, really recognized by the business community that, um, you're all pointed in, that we're all pointed in the same direction.
Well, and, and let me just thought, because of the pandemic, I think our need for broadband has really heightened. I mean, we've all had our, more than our share of Zoom meetings. So I think a lot of the businesses are realizing their dependence on the broadband. And I know Chris has been really engaged in that in the past. So any insight and help you can give us on that area and what the businesses need would be very helpful.
And that, and that's our job. I mean, that's our role is to help, um, get that information to you and vice versa. So.
Thank you.
Any, any other questions, either from our team to you or from, um, all of you on council to any one of us?
Carrie, I had a couple of questions.
Yes, please.
This Dave Boson. On, on the one page where you have your chart where it says capital investment, job potential, and where it says new includes those not active under the 957 million in capital investment, what does it mean that, that non-active?
I'll have Lisa answer that since she helped put together that data. Sage?
Well, those, those represent active projects. Uh, there's a category above it with line that says those, because it was requested by council that instead of putting a cumulative, total cumulative of active pros- prospects, wanted to separate those that were generated since May and include those in the total. So, uh, the city council could see the work that we've done in lead generation between the last time we gave you an update, which would have been mid, middle of May to, uh, the end of, uh, October.
Okay. So, but my question was, right under new, it says includes those non-active. What does, what does non-active? What, what part?
Yeah, that, that's probably a typo. I'm sorry about that.
Okay. And my next question, and Will had mentioned that you guys have re- you, you've reached 2.5 million people. How do you quantify that? How do you, how do you reach that many people? Because, and down below that, it also says since July 1st, you've reached 409,000 people in four and a half months. Can you, can you help me out on how you get that message out to that many people?
And I'll let Will answer that too. But I would tell you, our virtual reach, um, our, our digital techno- uh, technology that we use and that we have, we've been able to count, um, the number of people that are viewing what we're sending out our messaging and are, and participating. So Will, if you've got more, go ahead. But I know that we, we've been keeping track of it with, on our digital marketing specialist, keeps track of all of that data on, um, the side of who's, who's watching, who's reading, who's participating.
So it's not just that someone, uh, reached out on your website. It, it means that they've, that they've actually viewed something that you've sent out, even though they haven't done your website?
It includes the hits. It could be, it's all of the above. So it would include all of those who are engaged, who have actively looking or who are researching across our website.
Yeah. And I can just add into that quickly, just to spend on that. Uh, we're looking at, um, those analytics of impressions, um, looking at, um, those hits, uh, how many people are viewing our sites, where they're viewing, um, how many people are looking at our social media, et cetera. And so that's kind of how we're quantifying that.
It's cumulative. Yeah.
Yep.
Does that answer your question, Dave?
Yeah, I was just, I, I didn't know what the timeframe was from the, to, to hit the 2.5 million. I do know you, you came up with the 409,000 since July 1st.
Right.
You know what might be helpful? We don't have Aaron Jarnigan on this, um, Zoom call tonight, but it might be helpful if we have Aaron circle back with you, Dave, and just, and go over some of this so that, that he, maybe we need to communicate it more clearly too. But I, I know he'd appreciate your interest in that.
Well, I'm, I am interested because that's, that's an amazing amount of people that, that are, our message is getting out to. And I was just curious in how, how you, you quantified, how you got to that many people.
Absolutely.
And that's from, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Will. I'm sorry. Weekend talk.
That's from 2018 too. That, those numbers are from 2018. And so we're clocking it from that point on for that larger number. And that 409 is just over the, um, uh, since our last reporting period.
Yeah, it says July 1st to, to, to present. So, okay. Well, thank you.
Yep.
Thanks for asking. We'll get back to you.
And, um, just really quick, uh, and it's not like we don't believe Noel. I would never say anything like that. But, um, you know, we, we buy a lot of property. And when I was on council and hearing that, like, why are we doing it over here and why are we doing that? But Lisa, now that I'm, I'm on this side and I've said in those meetings, and I don't want to give the answer away, but when you're talking to a prospect, can you tell me the importance of having that readily, well, I won't give it away, but can you talk about, um, that whole scenario with this property and stuff and why it's needed?
Yeah, that's a, that's a very good question there. And, uh, the more certified, or, well, short of a certified site, but better when you have a certified site. There's some of these projects that probably wouldn't have given us a second look if we didn't have the real estate or there was some plan already in place of how the infrastructure would be extended if it wasn't there. And that's the world between night and day. Even if companies are looking for, uh, a certain number of acres in these larger projects, there's still that expectation that the real estate, or, excuse me, the infrastructure will be there within the timeframe, uh, of a company constructing a building. And so from the initial steps, and Noel knows this well, when we're, uh, get a lead, we, uh, how we, how we do it is, uh, I'll, uh, sit down, now it's virtually, with Noel and his team. And we'll be talking about which sites to best represent, uh, for particularly. And we will base it on, uh, the ability to, to extend infrastructure based on the timeline of the projects. And we're often, almost with every single lead, reaching out to the public works department, uh, the wastewater, uh, the water companies, just to verify it and double check. Uh, so, uh, infrastructure is everything, but also is the number of acres as well. And so to have a certified site is, uh, is a really good thing right now with the quick timeline.
Uh, anyone else? Any questions? Mrs. Klein, you're, uh, on mute, I think.
Sorry. Um, I'm a results-oriented person. I, it's interesting to hear about all these hits. It's interesting to hear about all these possibilities, about all these leads. It's interesting to see how the bank's doing. We heard about that last, last time. I, I'm pretty much, how many have we got in the corral that are brand new? How many are we going to brand as our own? You know, where are we at with actually, um, from start to finish, getting to that finish line? I just, are there new people, not people that we've had in the pipeline for a couple of years, but new people, new businesses?
Could I answer that one, Carrie?
Please.
Okay. Uh, Mrs. Klein, it's good to see you. Uh, I hope all is well with you and your family. That's a, that's a good question. And soon we're, we're going to be, uh, sending that out to you. Uh, we just finished a three-year, uh, economic development campaign. And every year we've, uh, commissioned a group called Impact Data Solutions to help us identify those quantibles that you're talking about with the projects we worked with, whether it's helping a new company, uh, locate in the city of Waterloo, or help working with Noel and his team. In both cases, it's helping the existing business expand. So it was Aaron Jarnigan and Molly Wells and I were reviewing that data, uh, just this morning and, uh, prepare, or, uh, prepared, taking that raw data to be able to illustrate that report to you and the demographics. Uh, so I expect that information to, uh, come by the middle of, you know, before, uh, Christmas, that is. So we will get you that information. It does exist. Uh, and, uh, we're just trying to put it together so, uh, we can, um, it's just understandable because, uh, it's bad when I have to walk, uh, the younger generation through the data. So, uh, it's, it's a lot of information right there. So we're trying to streamline it so we can get you something that, uh, is succinct and, uh, for your uses so you can see, uh, the return on investment.
And you're not the only one asking that question. That's why we hired this third party to do this data, this research for us so that we can compile it and, and provide it. Um, but I will tell you that with the encouragement and the partnership with Mid American Energy too, that, um, at least the last several months, Lisa's been working very hard at external marketing and what she's been talking about. But we've been all hands on deck, helping existing businesses, um, to make sure we don't lose the businesses that we have. Um, so I, I would say that, um, the data is going to be very important. I'm anxious to see it too. It just came the last couple of days and Lisa will be putting that together. But, um, you're not the only one asking that question, uh, Mrs. Klein. So we'll be sure to get that to all of you. Thank you. You bet.
All right. Well, thank you, um, Grow Cedar Valley for your leadership. Mr. Faraday, uh, thank you so much for your chair position. Uh, Carrie, uh, your leadership this last couple of years, uh, has been incredible. And the partnership, the support, the amount of leads, all of these things, I believe are healthy things that are going to, um, uh, pay incredible, uh, dividends, uh, as well. And I also want to, once again, thank the city council, uh, for all of your, uh, support as well for moving things forward. And, uh, Noel, I guess we'll give you a little something too. But, uh, thank you all very much. So.
Well, we couldn't do it without you and especially Noel and his department. So, especially on these guys. So, thank you.
Happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah. Uh, Ms. Jewin, you want to adjourn us?
Adjourn? Yeah. Motion to adjourn. Sorry.
Okay. All right. That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
We adjourn.